Development. She's going to be presenting on the Equity Summit that took place this summer, which went really, really well. But I won't kind of steal her thunder. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about it before she begins. So Jackie.
Thank you, Dr. Waters, and thank you, everyone, for having me. As Dr. Waters mentioned, we were fortunate to be able to plan an Equity Summit, which was held virtually this summer. And if you click to the next slide, Mr. Gilmer. So really, the focus of the Equity Summit was an opportunity for teacher leaders, educators, and community members to engage in professional learning, really like learning sessions around our equity work. It included some pre-recorded sessions and live sessions. And the goal was really to kind of further our work here in North Penn around our cultural proficiency and equity goals. Our target audience for this was teacher and administrator leaders in the district, and then also our parent and guardian leader. So we really focused on our parents who are active and important members of parent organizations within the district to really join this session. And there were a lot of breakout groups that took place and discussions on this day. And as I mentioned, it was held virtually because when we initially started planning the session, we weren't sure where we would be with our COVID, you know, restrictions and things like that. So we wanted to make sure that everyone could be fully engaged. And it also allowed us some flexibility, since we were holding it over the summer, to make sure that people could participate wherever they were. So if we talk about why we decided to hold this summit, it really is our students, right? We have a very diverse district, and that really is what makes North Penn a fabulous place to be. And we just included this graphic, which is from 2019, 2020, which breaks down our, you know, kind of our demographics here, knowing that our district is becoming increasingly diverse, and that we are constantly striving to meet the needs of all students across the district. Some of our sessions included Dr. Tyrone Howard. He was our keynote, and then did a breakout session for educators, which really, he incorporated a lot of North Penn-specific data and engaged teachers in conversation, which I think everyone found truly meaningful to kind of participate in this collegial discussion. We had sessions for both parents and teachers on really supporting our LGBTQ plus students. And so we ran a session Trans Inclusion 101. And I should just say that our presenters here for all set, like this assortment of sessions, was both in-district presenters and people that we reached out to that have expertise that are not within the district. So we had sessions that really focused on our ESL population and some misconceptions around that implicit bias. Dr. Barbara Moore-Williams, who is a consultant with whom we've worked for a very long time, she ran a parent session around colorblindness and the continuum. And then the italicized topics here at the bottom were our pre-recorded sessions. So we had a student panel that Ms. Tinsley ran, and we recorded this summer. Dr. Bauer and Dr. Da did a special Time for Dinner podcast featuring Dr. Hart. And then we had our learning coaches do some sessions on disability as diversity and UDL and anti-racism. So some takeaways. I love feedback. And so we always, after any professional development session, really are looking for feedback from our participants to really, you know, kind of gauge what went well and what we need to improve on. So I went through the feedback and tried to pull an assortment of teachers, administrators, parents, to really, you know, gauge and help show all of you what they had to say about the day. And so I highlighted just a few. I'm not going to read all of these, but a North Penn teacher shared, "I thought the Equity Summit was a great idea for both its depth of focus that allowed us to be immersed in the topic for an extended period of time, rather than just an hour or so, and two, parents to be included to learn as well as see the work the district is committed to. I would like to see this information or initiatives that demonstrate our values like this to be shared with students." I think too often, these ideas are discussed in adult-only spaces, rather than including them in student spaces as well. We had a parent share, "How do we create brave spaces where teachers, students, and parents can engage in conversations about equity?" And a North Penn administrator, Maslow, before blooming, "The need for social emotional supports. How are we going to address this? And the premise of colorblindness needs to be addressed with our staff as well." So I really felt like the feedback we received, one, it's always nice to hear positive feedback, but I feel like the feedback was also, okay, some of the ideas for how we can move this forward with staff, and even just kind of bridging the gap between our staff and also our community. So how can we engage families in this conversation? On the next slide are just some remaining questions. And so again, I included a few, pulled a few. We literally have 100, you know, over 100 responses. So although there was an amazing energy, what do we do now? Are we really willing to roll up our sleeves and get down to doing what we know has to be done? What can we do more to get our community members more involved in participating in school events? Will we be supported by admin when and if we are receiving pushback from community about addressing brave spaces, Black Lives Matter, and other social justice topics? And what policies and procedures is the school district putting in place to protect students of color, LGBTQ plus students, neurodivergent students, and disabled students, et cetera? So I thought these questions were just, they stood out, I think, to me, because I think a lot of our teachers and staff have these questions. They want to feel supported. They are invested in this work. And they just want to know that they and students are being supported, both at a building level and by the work that we're doing on our cultural proficiency and equity executive committee. So a lot of people have asked, like, what are our next steps? And where do we go from here? And one, I think, a first step is really sifting through all of the feedback and kind of taking some actionable steps based on the feedback from the Equity Summit this summer. Tomorrow, actually, our district administrators will engage in conversations around Dr. Howard's presentation, the teacher questions, and the impact on our equity work. So we'll be doing that tomorrow and kind of revisiting some of, not only his presentation, but just the general conversation that took place that day, and the very kind of honest comments that teachers, administrators shared during those sessions. We are planning on sharing the recorded sessions from the entire day with teachers, support staff, and community members. So we're going to kind of talk with our team and kind of develop a plan for that, particularly for sharing out with the community, so that everybody knows when it'll be shared, how it will be shared, who will it be coming from. We want to make sure that's clear. And then I think because everything went really well with the format and how content was delivered on that day, and just the conversations that took place, we are planning a full day of cultural proficiency and equity in February with a similar format to the Equity Summit. And so we've already started talking about additional topics that we could include based on feedback from teachers for this event that we had over the summer. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you, Mrs. Giomarco. You did an excellent job in coordinating this. I was on this session all day, and from beginning to end, it was wonderful. It was great to see parents were engaged, as well as teachers and administrators. And you know, my question always is, okay, so what, now what? And you've answered that, because I was wondering, okay, now that we have done this, where do we go from here? And it's especially important that teachers do receive this support from the administration, especially what we see with what we see going on all across the country. And our school board is head and shoulders above many of the others. And I was just really enlightened and glad to be a part of this excellent day that you put together. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So I just had a couple thoughts, questions about the community involvement piece. I'm really glad to hear that there's a decision being made to share this with the community. There's been, you know, some obvious feedback from people in the community that are skeptical of some of the work that we're doing. Unfortunately, there's a national narrative right now that's trying to undermine a lot of this work. So I do feel that, you know, being able to allow the community to take a look and see, you know, not just what are the topics, or, you know, a brief summary in a forum like this, but to be able to have the chance to see, you know, what actually is taking place and what the conversations are. I think that can go a long way to dispelling some of the misinformation that's out there about what it is that we're trying to accomplish in the district. And I am curious about the summit from the summer. How did people, particularly community members, how were they able to be involved? Were they invited? Did they reach out? Was there a message sent to the community? What was the, what did that look like?
So we really looked at the, kind of the organizations within the district where we have parent leaders, because it really was focused on kind of like that leadership aspect of, okay, we want not only teacher leaders that are leading the work in our buildings, but also our parent leaders who are leading, you know, our home and school, and N-Page, and our Pi group. So they received an invitation. And then we had some parents reach out, too, that said, hey, I heard about this, you know, is it possible for me to come? And, you know, we shared the information. So they registered through that, and then the information was shared based on whoever registered.
The February, the February summit that you're referring to, is that going to be, since it would be during the school day, right, or at least the workday, I should say, would that be, I guess, more involved with all of teachers? Would staff as well be involved in that? Support staff? And, you know, who is going to be targeted for that particular summit?
So that would be all staff that's present that day. So it might not be a day, you know, depending on employee calendars or things like that, anybody present that day will, we will be planning sessions and try to really kind of tailor sessions that meet the needs of the different employee groups that are within North Penn, because I think that's important as we're planning meaningful professional development, that you can really, people understand how they fit into this work, too, right? So it's not just, you know, kind of like a one-size-fits-all. And that was very deliberate, too, with how we structured the day, was that people had choice, so they could kind of pick sets, you know, certain sessions that they wanted to attend that would best meet their needs and interests. So we're going to do our best to do the same thing in February.
I think that's very smart. I think that you're, you know, right on to target the different, you know, groups of staff that we have and the role that they play, and the engagement that they have with students, and, you know, the different expectations that fall within those roles, you know, so that that's how this work becomes comprehensive, right, is that we're addressing it on not just the level of the individual groups that we're talking to, but the individual groups of people who are doing the talking, right? So I'm very encouraged that there was such a successful summit in the summer. I was unfortunately not able to attend, but I'm very encouraged by this work, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about where we're going moving forward. So thank you, Jackie.
Great, thank you.
All right. Anything else to show me tonight, Wanda? So any other thoughts?
Well, I just want to say, too, if and when we roll this out to the community, I think it's very important that they hear the session about with Dr. Howard, because he explains it very succinctly, that, you know, and a lot of people say, well, our district is not like that. We don't do that here. All the data he uses comes from your district. So they get to see that what he's talking about is what's happening in our district, not some other district out there, but our district. And so for those naysayers who say, well, that doesn't happen in our district, well, he's using our own data. So I think that's just very important for them to know, if they get to hear anything about his presentation, where he gets the information from.
And from the start, our cultural proficiency work has been grounded in our data, right? If you go back to the plan from three years ago, we did a granular look at our data and set benchmarks based on it. This isn't something that we're just pulling out of the air. This is something that we are recognizing is work that needs to be done in order to reach student groups that we are not fully engaged at this point, you know, and you got to reach kids and teach kids. And this is that work, and that's the whole purpose here, is to make sure that everybody feels like a part of the North Penn experience, and is able to live up to their potential. And they're going to do that when they feel like this is their school. So, okay, great. Thank you, Giomarco. I said that wrong. All right, Dr. Waters.
Yeah. So before we move to the next presentation, I just wanted to thank both of you for your comments and feedback. And also just let everybody who's listening know, we are planning a community forum. I believe it's October 26th. I don't have the date in front of me. Dr. Hart shaking her head, yes. So on October 26th, it did go out in our community ed brochure. All are welcome. You know, Mrs. Giomarco spoke about how the summit was more focused on the parent-teacher leaders, but this would be open to anyone who's interested in the topic, all things equity. So some of us will be there presenting some of the work that we've been doing in our district. So we look forward to that conversation, as well as a few others that we have planned throughout the school year.
That's great. That's great.
Yep. Sure. So next, we're gonna, we kind of end it with summer there with Mrs. Giomarco. We're going to move into fall, transitioning back to school. We're all so excited to be in person. It's great to see the kids, their smiles. We've all been out visiting schools, and it just makes all of us feel great to know that we are sort of returning to normal. We know that there's still some things that aren't where we want them to be, but we're just really happy that we're on our way to getting there. And so Dr. Hart, our Director of Curriculum and Equity, put together a presentation that she's going to be sharing to kind of highlight some of what you will see if you happen to drive by a school or stop by on your way to work, or if you're one of us just during the day. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hart.
Thank you, Dr. Waters. I appreciate that. So as we were thinking about the presentation for this evening, there is magic and new beginnings. There is a lot of energy on the very first day of school, and we, I tried to capture as much of that as I could, as I visit, I think, four or five schools on the very first day. So I wanted to give everyone who was watching and board members who are present an opportunity just to get some sights and sounds of that very first day of school. And as Dr. Waters said, a really magical time. So next slide. So I started at about 7:45, 7:50 or so on the very first day, and visited Penbrook. And I'm an elementary person, so it was the first time in my life I'd ever been on a first day of school in middle school. And it was really, you know, some pretty cool energy, people having an opportunity to see each other, principal out, Dr. Jenkins really welcoming kids back. And it was really a lot of really good energy. So you can go to the next slide. And so one of the things that was fabulous were kids who were seeing each other, who had not seen each other for the entire summer, and kind of making those connections. And I was actually pleased, because I mean, there's 13,000 students, and I've not been in North Penn that long, and actually bumped into someone that I knew. And so I had an opportunity to take a picture of her and her friend as well. So as you know, that NAP is a school sort of in transition, but it did not stop the energy on the very first day with staff and students, you know, coming together, parents, you know, dropping their kids off for the first time, some of them for 18 months. And I was just really impressed when I was in the building with the flexibility and the adaptability of staff and parents and students, as they were kind of getting used to their new space. And every day looks a little bit different, but that very first day, people were still trying to get their feet wet and kind of where they were going. And there were tons of staff people present, welcoming families in, kind of directing them, and it was really a beautiful thing to see. So after I was there, I also spent some time, as did Dr. Diedrich, at Gwen Nor, and I was there for arrival. And there's a lot of great things on the first day of school and middle school and high school, but there is nothing more magical than, you know, what it looks like on the very first day in an elementary school. And some of the images that I've captured on the bottom right, you see two little girls who were kind of walking next to each other. I asked to take their photograph, and I was asking what grade they were in, and they both said it was their first day of kindergarten. And I asked who their teacher was, and they ended up being in the same class. And so they had never really met each other, but they were going to walk into school sort of knowing someone. And I think that's sort of the magic that we see as well. And so just, you know, some older students, younger students, just trying to find their way. But it was really a very, very festive occasion.
Maybe that's a story that'll someday tell.
Yes, we will. Yes. So the idea of school mascots being present, I know it was typical of other schools, in addition to Gwen Nor as well, you know, kids, some of the children were riding buses for the very first time, needing some direction. But, you know, everyone was all hands on deck, making sure that that transition was as smooth as possible. And for families for whom this was their very first day at the school, very warm welcome as well. And so I think the photographs of taking, you know, being taken with the mascot, people kind of directing them, children feeling really comfortable going into a building, for some of them that they had never really entered before, was really, really pretty special as well. So it's a small steps that bring you satisfaction at the very end of the day. And so those are the schools I visited in the morning, and then I had the opportunity to visit North Wales in the afternoon at dismissal. And so, you know, the first day of school, the transportation piece is always tricky. There are lots of kids who are riding the bus for the very first time ever, and for others who had not been on a bus for, you know, for quite some time as well. And so I really want to take this opportunity to compliment the staff. They have a dismissal process that is seamless. And having done dismissal myself for many years, you know, Joe Cavone is using an app, so there's like a silent dismissal. There aren't huge announcements or bells ringing. People just sort of look at their phones, know where to go, and the kids come right out. And it was obvious that people had practiced that dismissal routine before the very end of the day, so they knew kind of where to go as well. There's a beautiful car line set up in the back of their building as well. And once again, lots of staff members who were there just to kind of jump in and help make sure that process went as smoothly as possible. So the days in each of the elementary schools, and I can imagine all of the schools ended and began very smoothly, and they ended the same way as well. I had an opportunity to kind of zoom through some of the buildings, and we talk a lot about like the power of images that the kids see when they walk into school on those very first days. And these are just some of the bulletin boards and displays that really were found in a number of schools. I didn't capture all of them. There were others I could have taken as well. But I think when we kind of go back to this notion of cultural proficiency and equity, those visual signs mean a lot, and can be very affirming and reaffirming. And so the idea of focusing on identity, the idea of kind of who kids are, and what we want for them to be, and sort of affirming who they are. And then I also, you know, love this quote by Audre Lorde, and it was actually in a couple of different schools, "You don't have to be me in order for us to fight alongside each other." And I think in a world where we've had a lot of turmoil, it's really was a powerful message to see, and a reoccurring theme that we saw in a number of the buildings that I visited during the first couple of days. And I think that's it. So just some, you know, insight into, you know, what some of the energy that took place in those first days. It was really a great, great way to begin. I know there was a lot of coordination at work that goes into it every year, but this year even more so. And I feel like the administrative teams, teachers did an amazing job just making that transition back as smooth as possible. Other thoughts or questions that you have for me?
Dr. Campbell?
Well, thank you for the pictorial essay. I love seeing the pictures to give an idea of what that first day looked like. And thank you so much. I think it's important that you said a lot of the teachers and administrators were all working and synced together, making sure that it worked. And that's important. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hart. I fortunately am in a position where I get to experience first day of school every year, right, from my own district. So, and I do start in middle school, so I know how the craziness that goes on there. But yeah, it looks like it was a real exciting time. And, you know, we're just finally sort of getting our feet under us, you know, we have one more holiday coming up, and then we'll finally start having some full weeks of school to get used to. But yeah, that was a great way to sort of start off the year with the energy that was in that presentation. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Oh, I think our student rep has a question.
Oh, well, it wasn't really a question, but it was another comment. It was just a comment about how I felt like coming back to school. So like, she said earlier, yeah, like, the energy is really bad. You can see that everyone's like really enjoying being back to school. Like before, you know how people would be like, oh, school, like, they want to be too excited about it. But you can really tell this year, everyone's really been grateful to be able to come back, see their friends. Like, I haven't seen some of my friends since ninth grade. So seeing them now is pretty amazing. Like, I love how everything went through. I'm grateful to be back.
Can I ask you, I'm just curious, from your own perspective, what's the vibe on the fact that they're wearing masks? Does it bring down that energy? Are kids just glad to be back? And it's kind of whatever you need to do? What is, what is your sense?
So, well, we could tell that a lot of people, they like, would rather not wear the mask, but like, I feel like at the same time, people are like thankful to be at least back in school. Just like, if we have to wear a mask, we'll wear it, because, you know, like, rather have to wear the mask and come to school than be at home and do virtual school.
Yes. It's nice that, you know, there's a new appreciation for in-person learning for our students, right? That's good to hear.
Mr. Fusco, if I may?
Yeah.
Young man, can you pronounce your name for me? I want to say it properly.
Oh, yeah, sure, it's Anoff.
Anoff. Thank you for sharing that, Anoff. Just beautiful to hear high school kids talk about loving being in school. We just had a new administrator meeting after school today. Dr. McKenna and Dr. Waters were there as well. And even the new administrators, Anoff, were like, the kids seem to really want to be there. And it's exciting that they want to be there. And they seem to recognize that it feels like a privilege now. And so it's just, thank you for sharing that. That makes me smile. And it was exciting to hear it from the adults as well. So it's mutual. Everybody feels fortunate to be there and happy to see one another.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hart.
Okay, all right. And Anoff, I just want to thank you, too, because I was watching the pictures that Dr. Hart was showing, and they were just making me smile. And, you know, and then to hear you say that even at the high school, you feel the same way is really great to hear. We do know, though, that obviously not everyone is back in person, and people did have a choice. And we do have about 300 elementary students who did choose the virtual option. But I have to tell you, they are also smiling. And Dr. Michael McKenna, our new Director of Elementary Education, and Ms. Jen Suzinski, who is kind of leading the charge up there at our virtual school, they have a presentation that they're going to share with you as well about how that came to be, and also how it's going. So I'm going to turn it over to you, too.
Thank you, Dr. Waters. Real quick, I am new to this role, and it was the first time in 20 years I did not have my own school to go to on the first day of school. So I joined Mr. McCosco over Walton Farm, and he had a great opening day outside with his mascot as well. So I didn't, I actually had my own first day, just, you know, a little bit different than being in my own building. So as soon as I came on board here in August, one of the tasks was to get the North Penn Virtual Academy going and ready for the start of the 2122 school year. Before I jump into any of the slides, I just wanted to read a quick overview, just to provide some background on Before I jump into any of the slides, I just wanted to read a quick overview, just to provide some background on kind of what our goal is for the Virtual Academy for our, as Dr. Waters mentioned, just about three hundred students. And for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, elementary families had an opportunity to elect to choose the North Penn Virtual Academy. They were able to choose just for the first trimester or for the entire year during that time. The programs taught by North Penn School District teachers who are teaching in our North Penn schools and are using our North Penn curriculum. So I think that's a really important piece of information to understand. It is a synchronous learning opportunity across all subject areas. They operate in tandem, but separate from our traditional in-person program. We provide daily office hours for teachers to work with and check in with students at the end of the day. We utilize Canvas as our learning management system and use Google Meet to provide our synchronous instruction. And we also kind of from feedback from last year. We provide a consistent lunch recess and specialist time for students kindergarten through sixth grade. And I think that's really important for families that have multiple students in the Virtual Academy to know that they can have their kids at lunch and be off their, their, their computers during that time to have a common specialist time as well, and also a common end time, office hour time as well. So start, end time, all those things are consistent across kindergarten through sixth grade. Bob, if you go to the next slide, please. So currently we have thirteen grade level teachers in the Virtual Academy. We have two per grade level right now, except for second grade. We actually have three teachers in second grade due to the enrollment numbers. Also, if you look at the enrollment numbers in general across elementary, you'll see that second grade is our largest cohort kindergarten through six. So the idea of having more students opt for virtual kind of parallels our overall enrollment numbers as well. We also have a virtual English second language teacher. And we're actually in the process of hiring a special edu, actually one autistic support special education teacher and also a learning support special education teacher right now. And our Director of Education, Megan McGeeheim is actually working through that process currently. Our class sizes, which was important as we were monitoring enrollment. Our class sizes do fall within our classroom size guidelines. And actually it ranged from a smallest size in kindergarten, I think that actually is now fifteen students in kindergarten all the way up to twenty-seven in sixth grade, which is our largest. So we still are within our guideline frameworks that we have in person in our Virtual Academy. As Dr. Waters mentioned, at this time, when I created this presentation, it was three hundred and six. We have been navigating some movement a little bit here and there. We have a process for that if there are any changes at this point, because we're out in the midst of our trimester kind of to navigate that. And we do have a process for our principals and families to work through. If we have any of that information comes about as far as changing learning environments at this point in the school year. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jen Sisinski, who's going to do the next two slides.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna. So we felt it was really important that our Virtual Academy teachers were housed in district buildings, which gave them an opportunity to have, you know, a professional learning space for their students and kind of set up that classroom atmosphere. So you can see on this slide that our six, seven grade levels are at the respective buildings. And this really also gives them an opportunity to collaborate with grade level partners in these buildings. Have accessible accessibility to an admin in these buildings and really feel a part of that North Penn culture. So we just wanted to go over some communications with the families in August. Dr. McKenna and I had sent out two communications, just kind of setting up the guidelines and expectations. We know this is different than March learning online. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, parents kind of knew what their role is as a learning coach and how we're here to support them. We've been sending out weekly communications, doing that through our teachers to our virtual parents, so they kind of know up to date some different things that are going on. We also wanted to make sure that our kindergarten students had an experience to meet the teacher, just like our in-person students do their kindergarten day. So we had a virtual meet the teacher in August before school started. And we also had a parent informational session, which we had learning coaches, tech coaches present to kind of go through the Canvas interface and just give an opportunity for parents to ask any questions. And then in the beginning of Sep, in the beginning of September, we had a materials pickup, which was successful. Students went to their home buildings and families were able to pick up their school supplies for the school year.
We've also created a Virtual Academy professional development calendar, always through an equity lens as we navigate through these different topics. Also, some of, almost all of our Virtual Academy teachers are new to North Penn. Some are, have been in, within the district in previous years. So there is some training that goes involved in making sure that they're up to speed with all the interfaces and programming that we use. We definitely spent a lot of time in Canvas due to the fact that that's the learning management system that the teachers are using. Although in the younger grades, we use a lot of CSOL as well for a lot of the student work and feedback for teachers as as through Canvas, but mainly through activities are run through CSOL. Also, our student information system, Infinite Campus, we have some assessments that we need to talk through and how to navigate those in a virtual setting. Obviously, it's a little different than going through those through an in-person setting. Even, even training within all of our curriculum as well, second step responsive classroom, our school-wide behavioral program, foundations for our early grades, and also just looking and discussing best practices in a virtual setting and how important that is. And we actually have set up a weekly professional development sessions for our virtual teachers to come together as a group and working through that calendar every month, or actually really every week to ensure that we've have a consistent professional development schedule in line for those teachers. Also, they know they can always access any of our coaches one-on-one as well for any additional support. And the last slide is just, you know, Mrs. Jen and myself are the main contacts for our Virtual Academy teachers and also Virtual Academy families. And we've been the ones, again, been communicating with the teachers and families since August, since we initiated this and started the Virtual Academy here at North Penn.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Thank you, Jen. Do you have any questions, Dr. Lewis Campbell?
Yeah, I did have a question regarding that Canvas training. I know in the past that was a concern with many teachers not feeling as if they had enough time to learn Canvas to teach. Did you find that teachers had enough time or were more receptive to teaching via Canvas?
It's a great question. So the great thing about Canvas being really ubiquitous across many school districts is the fact that when we went through the hiring process, we actually found a lot of our, that was actually a question we asked and determined. And really looked for, for teachers that had experience using Canvas. Hopefully as a teacher, and many had done that previously. And even having that as a student helped too, where they now actually know how to navigate that process as well. So many of our teachers already had training and had used Canvas as a teacher before. But we definitely knew that was an important area. So we spent a lot of time before the first day. We actually were still hiring very people very close to the start of the school year. But we ensured that they had not only a whole group access to that professional development, but also individual help. Many of them accessed our technology learning coaches for one-on-one support before the first day of school too.
Okay, thank you. And how often did they come together to talk about and flesh out the best practices for teaching in those virtual settings?
So we, Jen and I have met with the virtual teachers on a number of occasions through the first week before the school started and bringing our tech coaches as well. We just met last Thursday. We have another meeting this Friday. So really Thursdays at two thirty, we've kind of programmed in our calendar that we will bring everyone together for professional development session. So that is our general day. Teachers know that the office hour time needs to be, needs to end at two thirty. So then they can participate in that professional development every Thursday at two thirty.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Bauer, I don't, oh gosh, yeah, hold on. Dr. Bauer, I don't think it was mentioned. But what was the funding mechanism for this virtual program?
You, did you mean me or did you mean Dr. McKenna?
Well, you, I meant because.
Yeah. We used, we use federal funds to support the faculty, the additions for the Virtual Academy. So this, the Essar monies that we've spoken about in finance committee meetings, these were new teachers.
Right.
Yeah.
These are all new teachers and we have used the funding that we got through the COVID relief for much of this, right? For clear on where that money is being allocated. There are not enough, of many districts, I think, in the county that have taken this approach. Many have just decided if you want to have an option without being in person, that you'll have asynchronous learning. So I, which actually kind of raises my next question. You did say, and that was actually surprising to me, that there were the option to opt for the full year. Is that correct, Dr. McKenna? How many, what percentage of the students opted to do a full year of this?
I don't have the exact data on that, but it definitely was a lot lower. I, I mean, if Jen and I probably, when looking through it, it was, it was probably close to ten or fifteen percent if I had to look through and we looked through the data. It definitely wasn't as high. But again, at the end of the trimester, those students who did sign up for the trimester, they could continue for the rest of the year. So I think many families weren't sure about signing on for the whole year. So they did the trimester and then like I mentioned, they, they, they may be able to continue on if they want to for the rest of the school.
Well, and the reason, and that doesn't surprise me at all that it would be like a ten percent number, because you know, I wonder, and I, I think it might even be worthwhile to, at some point to consider surveying some of the families participating. How many are opting to do this as opposed to, you know, a cyber charter for the year, right? You know, there, most of the families I would expect are kind of just waiting for things to normalize, you know, enough where they could feel safe and comfortable having their students return to school. But we know there is a percentage of students in the district that for a number of reasons opt for cyber charter. And I'm just wondering, because it has that additional piece of just of being synchronous instruction, you know, and personalized with your own homeschool, if there is a percentage that see this as a viable alternative to going elsewhere. Because we're continually looking for ways to bring these families back to North Penn. Not just because they're North Penn residents and we want our kids in our buildings, but also because of the funding that tends to go with them when they do leave us.
Mr. Fusco, I just pulled up the numbers in Infinite Canvas. It looks like fifty-six students elected virtual for the entirety of the year at the elementary level.
That's significant, I think. I'd be curious about reaching out to some of those families to get their. Okay. And one other question was, you did say that there was some fluctuation, you know, that you were supposed to pick a trimester, but you know, we're working with families. Is that more of a, which direction is that heading? Is that more kids going in or more kids coming out?
Yeah, I mean, it was interesting because, you know, some students who had done, signed up for virtual actually showed up on the first day of school and came in person and then vice versa. Kind of as we got close to the start of the year, you know, we had some students who, who wanted to, to switch to virtual as well. It's, it's been very few that we've had a switch to, from more in-person to virtual. We've asked, really asked that, that the parents, you know, speak with their principals and have a, you know, a clear rationale on why. We understand, you know, if family situations happen, different things happen with, with our families. And to make sure that we look at every case individually to make the best decision and support those families if they need to make a change in, in learning environment either direction. Virtual may not be working that well for a family and they might want to come in. And then for some reason in person is happening, they, but for some reason it could be a medical issue with a family member or something that they may need to transition to, to virtual. So just making sure that we work with the families and, and make the best decisions possible for whatever the family situation is at that time.
So one last point, and this is really for the community, because I do know the answer to this question. But there's two classrooms for first grade, three for second grade, you know, two for fourth grade and thirteen elementary schools. So when a student does return, what does that look like? And they can return to in-person learning?
So every child was placed in an in-person classroom all the way back into, in September. So they, they actually, when they went on Infinite Canvas, they would be able to see who their teacher, in-person teacher would be when they returned. So when we looked at enrollment and placement and all of that, we factored all of the students in to have a seat in a classroom. So when they return, we have a teacher designated for them. And we'll be ready to go when they decide to return at the end of the trimester or whenever that may be.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Anything else, Dr. Lewis Campbell?
Thank you both.
All right. I think then, thank you, that brings us to enough. I say that right? Enough? Okay, good.
Yes.
Wrote it phonetically. I have to do that sometimes. All right. Do you have an update? Anything that you care to enlighten the committee about?
So I actually had a question sort of. So I remember in my calc class, we talked about how it might be a possibility that we might like go virtual or something, because our, my calc teacher was talking about it. Or like how the virtual option was going to be like, because the delta numbers were getting higher or something. Is there anything about that, like maybe change for virtual or anything like that? No, right?
Yeah, I'll answer that enough. At this point in time, we have no plans to go to fully virtual. Our goal is to continue to have schools open if at all possible, but of course to be safe. So we'll just continue to monitor the situation, but there are no plans presently to go to fully virtual. If we are in high community transmission again tomorrow morning, then that would mark the second week of being in a particular level, namely now high. Because we do have it written in our health and safety plan. It does take two weeks at a new level for you to officially switch to that new level. We won't be switching each week. So if we are again in high, since we were high last week, if we're high again as of tomorrow morning, then we would switch to the opportunity for students to be able to elect to be in a streamed situation. We are saying that those individuals, we need to make a choice so that if they do that, then they would need to stick in that mode of learning for the remainder of the period that we're in high. If we could fall back to substantial again, then they would return to the classroom. But it won't be, last year there was an opportunity, well, today I'd like to be virtual, the next day, you know what, I'm going to go in. You know, then I'll be virtual. It was just too difficult for everyone to manage in that situation. So we do make it available to our students and their families if they would like to elect virtual when we're in high transmission and to be able to, you know, watch classes in a streamed basis. But we are asking for a commitment for the remainder of the time period, whatever that might be. That might be two weeks, that would be the minimum, because you need to have two weeks at the same level. So if we would have two weeks of substantial, we would drop, you know, back into not having that streaming again. But it could be four weeks, five, whatever it might be they're asking.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to add, that is a very important piece that while we do want to be flexible for certain families and certain situations and take, you know, issues on case by case, that the back and forth, particularly with the high school students last year, was a real frustration. It was really disruptive for, for many, many educators last year. And I think we really do need to drive this point home that, you know, if we are in this and we're going to give you the opportunity to have the streaming element that you really are committing to it, at least until conditions on the ground change. I know from my own personal experience, I had a student I had to text to see if he was coming in or not on the days I was planning to see him. And he had my cell phone number, it was the only way I could reach him. It was really frustrating. My own personal experience. So that's a very important piece of that. Thank you, Dr. Diedrich. All right. Any additional topics for the committee? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our public comment. And I do see we have a few attendees. Tonight's meeting is our regularly scheduled committee meeting. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting to ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and address. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the ECI committee. The committee chair may ask the individuals to yield to the next speaker. All right, Mr. Gilmer.
So if anybody intends to make public comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. We do have one hand up. Up first is Jason Lanier. Jason, I have enabled your microphones. Ready to begin? You can state your name and address and begin your comments.
Chase Lanier, Lansdale Borough. I, I'm so glad you guys had a, an equity summit. Unfortunately, I guess you forgot to invite people who might be interested in. in understanding what it is that you guys are implementing with your diversity, equity and inclusion and your anti-racism and all the other stuff that I've been asking you about for some time, going back eight months. And being that nobody seems to be able to give me a clear definition of what that means. I went to your, the resources on the website, on the North Penn website to find out what some of this meant. And if you're telling me that anti-racism is something other than racism, you, you gotta educate me on that. I don't get it because it's, it sounds a lot like racism. You're just kind of switching, switching, I mean, the traditional racism where you're saying that, that when you said that, that it's an oppression of, of one minority group. Well, I guess you're not oppressing a minority group, but you're certainly oppressing, you're, you're calling out a race or you're singling out a race based upon their color. And you're using terms for anti-racism, which don't make any sense, like only white people have self-reliance and only white people have individualism, only light, white people are decision makers. I can't believe you guys are pushing this. And yet, and yet this is the language that is coming from the references that you push forward. I don't get this. And, and a little bit more on this. Mr. Fusco, you said that there seems to be a national effort to push against this. And, and I would say, well, there seems to be a national effort pushing this on. This, this didn't just sort of organically happen and it seems to be done on the sly. You don't want to keep it, you don't want to let people know what you're thinking. It doesn't seem as if there is really an interest in, in getting feedback from the, the, the parents of the kids that are going to the school. It just seems like you guys are pushing this without really looking at what it is that we were concerned about. And, and, and I, I just, it, it seems to me when, when you say, the, the, you, you, I'm going to, you know, paraphrase what you said, but something about, but the, the, this national push that is going against the work that needs to be done. What is the work that needs to be done? This would be, would be, would be great to, to let everybody know what the work, what the goal of all of this is. Because when I see you guys taking things or doing, I guess it, you don't want to say it's critical race theory where you're, where you're dividing kids upon race, but you sort of are, but you're in colorblindness, but only if it counts to what you're saying. How about when you do the privilege walk and you, and you separate kids of Pion for, for, for things that they have versus what they haven't, what they've grown up with and what they haven't? How is this good for anybody? I really don't understand this implementation of, of equity in the greater sense of education. If you could answer that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
I do not see any other hands at this time. That'll conclude public comment.
Thank you. Just very briefly, the, the work that needs to be done, I would say primarily regards our disproportionality data, right? It's real, it's evident, and we want to lessen and then eliminate the achievement gap that we find in our data. So that is the purpose, at least one of the main drivers of this work. Okay. Seeing no other comments, we have no agenda items that have been recommended to move to work session or action. And our next ECI committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 5th at 6:00 PM. And as is the case for all of our committee meetings, it will be in the virtual format. All right. Seeing nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Great job with the presentations tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.